We'll call the order of the Board of Commissioners meeting for Douglas County, Nebraska for Tuesday, February 11th, 2025. Please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the Legislative Chamber alongside an automatic external defibrillator. Please stand for the pledge.
For the reasons to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of the God, indivisible, infinite in justice.
We'll start with the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Fahey is absent at the moment. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. First items of business are A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of a Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, February 4th, 2025, and B being a call for a meeting and set Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Do I have a motion, a second?
Second.
Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our resolutions under equalization, Resolutions C through E. Do I have a motion, a second, to approve and block?
Move.
Motion by Morgan, second by Rogers to approve C through E. Was there anybody here that wanted to speak on Resolutions C through E for equalization? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We do have one protest today. Item F, protest of special valuation, green belt disqualification for the following parcels listed on the final agenda. We'll start with Mr. Goodwilly.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. This is, there are three parcels here. Could I get a little assistance here? Thanks. There we go. Okay. Maybe zoom in a little bit. No, out. I'm sorry. Not that left, your other leg. Keep going. There you go. Okay. These three parcels had been in special valuation, and I know you've heard enough about it over the years to kind of have this vague recollection of what special valuation is. It is a valuation preference that is provided to land only that is primarily used for agricultural purposes, and agricultural purposes are defined as the commercial production of plant or animal products. So, we had a staffer who was out in that part of the county, it bore, these parcels border Skyline Drive, and he was out in that part of the county and he noticed these parcels having, well, they were getting bulldozed. The tree line, not so much, but from this, from just almost to the street, back to just nearly the trees, there was, the property was getting bulldozed, there was a barn that had gotten, or a house that had gotten taken down. And what experience has told us over the years is when the bulldozers roll in, that's usually the end of the agricultural activity. So, what happens with special valuation when a property's use changes is, we send out a disqualification letters. By state law, if the property changes use and becomes disqualified in one year, it gets to keep its value for tax purposes for that year, but then the very next year, it gets a more market-based value. The difference between ag land value and market value for the same land in Douglas County is quite considerable. In any event, our appraiser sent out a disqualification letter on these three properties in late '24, meaning in '25, the value would have a more market-based value. To show you what our appraiser was seeing, is these properties kind of looked like, kind of looked like that, if you can see it. It looks like quite a bit of soil had been taken off. I think this is some sort of a septic or sewer item there. Let me show you another one. Here's a different view of the same parcel. And like I say, our experience has always been in the past that the minute the bulldozers, you know, when the bulldozers roll in, that's sort of the end of any meaningful agricultural activity. Mr. Anderson has filed a protest of our disqualification, and I'm sure he would like to speak. I would just mention a couple of things. First, in terms of market value for 2025, we think there probably needs to be some further work done on this, and I would encourage him to reach out to our appraiser. The very treed portions are also very steep and probably not buildable, so it would probably need some sort of a land adjustment to accurately capture that. And then with respect to, I know Mr. Anderson has said in his protest, that the front parcel, if you will, this one, oops, are we not? Oh, okay. That this front parcel may end up getting planted again later this year. If that's the case, I would encourage him to file a special valuation application for 2025. The deadline for doing so is the 30th of June. So, if he were to do that, I would make that suggestion. With that, I'll take any questions, or I suppose if Mr. Anderson would like to speak, now's his, now's his opportunity.
Ray Anderson, I'm the owner of the property out there. I'm here mainly to answer any questions you might have on it. I've been there 45 years. I've always planted for corn or beans, whatever, and the family that does the farming has been doing it for 20 years. I wasn't planning on doing anything, but I went ahead and decided to build my house, redo my house. And when we did that, we bulldozed the house, we took maybe four or five inches of soil and moved it to the site where the house is going to be. That's where you see a lot of bulldozes. At one part sticking out of there, to build my house, the city may be put sewer in, water in, which would accommodate future development in that first spot. We would like to do that down the road here, but at this particular time, I think it's not feasible. I've got Lannahaw on one side of me, he's got 90 lots, he's got 10 or 12 lots sold there. Another developer in the north of me, he's got 12 lots, he's got four lots sold, two of which are their own developers, which they've been building houses out there. If you've been by there, you've seen them. Anyway, well, I'm just asking, that front part, there's, you know, we're going to plant beans, and the family has planned on doing that this spring. I don't have any really, anything else to really say, or any questions from you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Thank you, Mr. Goodwillly. We'll go into discussion, starting with Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Mr. Goodwilly, I'm looking at this map, and it looks like all in, there's like 25 acres and change involved in this?
Oh, I think that's right, when you total up all the acreage of those three parcels, yes.
So, the difference between 25 acres at the green belt rate and 25 acres at, what would this be, residential? I don't know.
It's considerable. The green belt, there are a couple of different values for the green belt land.
Is the whole 25 acres currently greenbelt?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, with the exception of the land that was under the barn and under the house, land associated with buildings doesn't qualify for green belt.
So, that gets regular?
So, that gets a house site, home site kind of value.
Gotcha. So, what's the difference, what's the dollar amounts we're talking?
I don't, I don't have a total, but in the memo I provided to you all, the value for one of the parcels last year was 33,160. The land val, well, in other words, 13,990, and the land value for the third was 102,000, although 92,000 represented farm and home site value. The market value is, I thought I had that, I apologize. I think the going rate for, I apologize, I don't usually miss that.
These values are for ag purpose values, is that correct?
Yes, yes. So, I think we had them at, I think the ballpark rate out there for developmental ground is like 28,000 an acre, or thereabouts.
If it was not ag?
If it's not ag, yes.
Okay. So, much of this, it looks like, you know, maybe half of it, looks like trees, right? Trees qualify for ag?
They can if you're taking timber off of them. I don't think that's what Mr. Anderson was doing, but we were treating it more or less as, for lack of a better term, wasteland, meaning it's land that you're really not farming, but it would be hard to do a lot of ag with it, but it does adjoin and is in common ownership with land that is being farmed. So, for example, you have those three parcels, you know, the parcel in front toward the street, I think had beans on them, and the trees adjoin, so they were given a relatively low agricultural value to reflect that.
So, it looks like of the 25 acres we're talking, maybe 10 of it was in beans? Rest of it is the house and the trees?
Yeah, that's fair. Ballpark, yeah.
Mr. Anderson, you've been living here for 40 years, you said?
Forty-five years, yeah.
Forty-five years. Are you a farmer?
No, no. I have Anderson's Community Food Mart in Omaha here.
I see. Do you lease this farmland to somebody who farms it?
Yes, Ostranski, and it's $1 a year, and that's my benefit is I don't have to cut the weeds, I don't have to look at the weeds, and so forth. He keeps it trimmed, or whatever he plants, does a good job doing it.
Right, but by leasing that for a dollar a year, the 10 acres, you've been getting greenbelt on 25 acres, is that right?
Well, okay, the back part's wasteland. The state always told me I could never build there, so that's for the animals, in fact, we got deer, foxes.
My light's on, but I'll come back.
Anyway.
I appreciate it, but you get greenbelt on the whole thing right now?
You know.
Except for the house?
Except for the house, and we pay the regular rate on that.
Gotcha, okay.
But I'm looking at the front part, we're going to do beans again. Eventually, we'll get developed, but right at this point, it's not feasible, and considering I got Lannahaw next to me doing 90 lots, he doesn't have, he's only got 10 sold or so, 12. Guy next to me's got 12, he's only got four sold, two of which is his own.
That's time.
It's just.
I appreciate it, but we got time limits here. I'll come back, I'll come back.
Thank you. Well, really briefly, on my end, so the green belt exemption requires there to be current agricultural operations happening?
Primarily used for agricultural purposes, yes.
Okay, and is there current agricultural operations going on at the moment, Mr. Anderson?
Well, he'll be, he just finished his, we had beans last year, he's doing beans again this year. Just soon as he can plant them in, he'll do it.
So, the application that Mr. Anderson filled out was for the exemption for year 2025, or for what year specifically?
Well, let me stop you for a minute. Some years back, Mr. Anderson would have filled out a special valuation application to get this valuation preference. There's no annual application. You stay in it until the use typically disqualifies you. So, then what happens is, if we think the use has changed, we send the property owner a disqualification letter. They keep the value for that year. So, for example, in '24, these parcels had a special valuation. We sent them a disqualification letter in December. For tax purposes, they keep that value, and then the value would go to a more market-based value in 2025. In the olden days, if use changed, there was something called recapture tax that grabbed the difference between the special value and the market value for that year and several current. That went away a number of years ago, and so now, the disqualification is prospectively. So, if you get a disqualification letter in year one, then you get a market value in year two. So, what we're talking about, Commissioner Garcia, is what value would look like in 2025.
Okay, got it. And so, there's not like an annual application to keep it going unless you're disqualified for some reason?
Right.
So, in theory, you're supposed to continuously have agriculture operations happening?
Yes.
Right? And if there's not, hence the disqualification?
Right.
Got it. Okay, and so, if he applies by the June 30th deadline that you mentioned, he would regain the exemption, but for next year, 2026, or for this year?
No, no. If they actually plant something and file a green belt application, we would go out and review it, sort of a trust yet verified thing, make sure there's something actually growing, and then we would come back and change the value to a more ag-based value for 2025.
And that changed value would then be implemented?
In '25. Build in December '25, payable in '26.
Got it, okay. Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you. I think what we've heard, though, is that the property hasn't changed its use, and it will continue to be farmed, and so with that, I think that we just continue with the green belt valuation on the properties. That's a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Borgeson, second by Friend to continue the exemption for the addresses, all three addresses stated?
Yep.
So, there's a motion, second on table, discussion on that. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I have a few questions. I'd just like to get some clarification. Mr. Anderson, Mr. Goodwilly, if you could, for a second?
Oh, certainly.
I still have a couple of questions. So, the property currently is valued at, it looks like, I don't know, 145,000 all-in?
All-in, yeah, that sounds about right. Maybe, maybe a little bit more than that, because there were improvements on it. That would have, since they're gone, they would come off.
Okay. And the valuation would go up, I think you said, is it 28,000 per acre?
I think that's, I think that's what we had on it as market value, yeah.
Okay.
So, if special valuation remains, the land values would be very similar with what we've described in the memo.
Right. But that, the value of the property would go from that 145,150 to, I don't know, is it 700,000 something?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't done the math.
Okay, I'm just saying.
But Commissioner, yes, it would, it would bump, it would bump significantly, and that's not atypical at all of the difference between special valuation and market value. Along the development quarters, in Douglas County, you can see land sell for 80, 90, 100,000 an acre, where for dryland farming under green belt is 5,400 an acre. So, it's quite different.
So, Mr. Anderson, this last ag year?
Right.
2024, was this planted in beans or something?
Beans, yeah.
Okay.
Every year, there's been something every year.
Okay, so why are the bulldozers on it, did you say?
Okay, I'm building, I'm replacing my house, I've been there for 40 years, 40 years.
That's the house back by the trees that we see?
Trees, right there. We raised the ground up four, I think four feet or something like that.
Yeah.
So, I took my dirt?
Yeah.
Up that front hill?
Yeah.
And spread it there, that's what they see there. Now, that pipe sticking out of the ground is part of the new sewer system that they put in there. The land wasn't that high. That's sticking up.
So, where's your new house going to be?
Right where the old one is.
I see.
Yeah.
And have you torn down the old one?
It's just got tore down now.
Okay, but come spring, you're, the guy you're leasing to is going to plant this in some?
Plant, not where the house is, but where.
But where the ag field is?
Just, yeah, just, it's 7.9 acres or something like that.
Well, one of them is, and then you've got a little chunk of the other one, the one that runs down to the river.
That's wasteland and.
Right, but you've got one that's all ag, it looks like 7.6, and then you've got this partial, which is all in, 7.9, but it'd only be a couple, three acres, it looks like, maybe of the ag land. You've got about 10 acres ag land.
Probably another home site next to me, eventually.
Okay, and it looks like there's some pretty good development going on just to the east of you, is that right? Houses going up?
Turned south of me.
Oh, that's south, okay.
That's Lannahaw's, 90 lots he put in on that spot.
Okay. Do you anticipate constructing on this property at some point in the future?
On mine?
Yeah.
Oh, you know, down the road here.
Okay.
It's not feasible today, or, you know, maybe, maybe next year, maybe not.
I got you. So, Mr. Goodwilly, if nothing changes, he planted a crop last year, he planted a crop this year, would that change our position?
No, what I've been saying is, right now, it doesn't look like it's getting an ag use. If they plant and reapply for special valuation, then in all likelihood, if our guy drives out there and there's beans planted, we'll grant it.
Okay, well, I guess we take Mr. Anderson at his word, he's going to plant it this spring, or his guy is going to plant it this spring?
You will make up the tax difference on my new house. I guarantee you that.
That's time.
Well, that's good to know.
The way things are jumping up, I just, you know, prices of lumber, everything, it's unreal. When I decided to do that, I almost said, hey, forget it, I'm not going to live that long.
No, I hear you, I hear you. Thanks for coming down.
Okay, thank you.
There's a motion and second on the table, other discussion? Yes. Is it okay if it includes the adjournment board? Yep, okay, very good. All right, let's go ahead and vote. That concludes Board of Equalization. We will now go into Board of Corrections. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Fahey is absent. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business is Item One, Approval of the Minutes, the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, January 14th, 2025. Do I have a motion, a second?
Second.
Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have a report from Director of Corrections, Director Myers.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Michael Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. You have my report for the month of January. Turning to enclosure number one, Administrative Services and Personnel. After the seventh month of the fiscal year, we are 435,706 under budget. There were 237,007 spent on overtime costs. That is a slight increase from the previous month. We did have an increase in sick and other leave time that appears to be responsible for the increase. Our records division processed just shy of $1 million of bond payments. Six officers below the rank of sergeant and one sergeant left employment in January. Four officers were promoted from CO1 to CO2. As of January 31st, we were 103% staffed among all correctional officer ranks. That does include a class of 19 cadets in our academy, pardon me, which began on January 13th, and they are expected to graduate on February 22nd and will begin three weeks of field training after that. Turning to enclosure number two, Community Corrections and Reentry Services. The Sanction Center and Traditional Discharge Center placed a total of 11 individuals in community corrections, saving 59 bed days in the jail. Work release admitted 31 individuals. House arrest admitted 80 individuals, that is the highest total in well over a year. The Reentry Assistance Program admitted 19 individuals. Turning to Reentry Services in our therapeutic communities, there were 55 individuals admitted to therapeutic community housing units. There are currently 110 individuals on the GED waitlist, and there are 56 active students. Three individuals achieved a GED. 11 individuals were referred to our Intensive Outpatient Treatment Program, or IOP, and 34 individuals received substance use disorder evaluations. There were 300 individuals placed on pretrial release. There were 1,294 individuals supervised on pretrial release over the course of the month. 536 individuals participated in the 24/7 Sobriety Program. 179 of them were supervised, excuse me, via GPS monitors. That saved theoretically 3,960 jail bed days, which translates into a detention savings of 673,200. Pretrial services staff are working with a new vendor on pretrial release software. We hope to have that software launched within the next few months, and that software will hopefully provide us much more detailed outcome measures than what we've been able to provide you thus far in terms of tracking violations, court appearances, et cetera. Enclosure number three, Compliance. Regular reporting of all compliance-related data continues. The next audit we will participate in will be conducted by the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare, which will occur sometime during the second half of this year. Enclosure number four, Population. There were 1,420 admissions, and there were 1,365 releases. Our high count was 1,039, our low count was 991. Our average daily population was 1,013. That is an increase of 69. You may recall from last month, I did report that we had an historically probably record-setting in a modern era, low month, so we did bounce up a bit from that. The average length of stay for inmates who were released in January, the average, overall average length of stay was 25 days. 49% of inmates stayed longer than 72 hours. Their average length of stay was 49 days. 51% of inmates were released within 72 hours of being booked, and their average length of stay was 1.4 days. There were 98 custodial sanctioned bed days. The US Marshal population increased. The felony pretrial population was 719. The average daily felony pretrial was 719, that is an increase. The average daily misdemeanor pretrial population was 132, that is also an increase. Probation violations remain stable. Probation violations remain stable. Twenty percent of our population were between the ages of eighteen and twenty-four. Sixty-five percent of our population were minorities. Sixteen percent of our population were female, that is an increase. Eighteen percent of our population were homeless or nearly homeless, and that was also a slight increase. Turning to enclosure number five, medical and mental health, there are one thousand ninety-five intake screenings, and there are four hundred and five physical and health assessments completed. There were twenty emergent medical care transports, four of those were by nine-one-one. There were nine hospital admissions that resulted in thirty total days of hospitalization. There were thirty off-site medical specialty appointments. Um, there were a hundred and forty-four initial psychiatric assessments completed, there were three hundred and fifty-two initial mental health assessments completed. A hundred and twenty-one individuals were placed on suicide precautions, and a hundred and sixty-two individuals were placed on alcohol, drug and alcohol detox protocols. There were four, but Board of Mental Health referrals that were approved, we have thirteen on the regional center waitlist, and there are currently fourteen of our individuals at the Lincoln Regional Center. And Commissioners, if we could deviate for just a moment, and if you could turn, um, under your tab number five to page forty-two. Um, I included some additional mental health data from the stepping up, um, initiative that we are a part of, along with many other local agencies. Um, we get this data quarterly, and I took some excerpts of data that is most, uh, applicable to the jail. Um, you can see on page forty-two, um, there's actually two page numbers on this, but, uh, because it was, I took it from another booklet, uh, but it's page forty-two. The first is the, one of the goals is to reduce the number of people booked into jail with a serious mental illness. And you can see over the course of time, um, we haven't made a ton of progress on that, on the, on them, on the bookings coming in. The, we continue to run, you know, into the high, mid to high twenty percent, um, and we finished the year with December, um, having thirty point two percent of the individuals booked into jail having a serious mental illness. Turning to the next page, um, a, a related but different statistic is to reduce the number of people, um, who are in the jail. So this is, doesn't count bookings, this is more of an average daily population. And again, um, the line is fairly flat, it runs in the, the low to mid, the lower to, lower thirty percent. We finished the year with thirty-three point two percent, um, of individuals, um, booked into the jail, uh, or not booked, but residing in the jail with a serious mental illness. We still run around fifty percent of the overall population having a mental illness, but around thirty-three percent now have a serious mental illness. The following page, um, this does, uh, have some good news. Around the country, it's been reported that the average length of stay for individuals with a mental illness is up to four times longer than individuals who don't have a serious mental illness. We are doing much better than that in Douglas County, and our trend has been improving as well. Um, you can see, um, in December, for instance, uh, individuals without a serious mental illness, their average length of stay was approximately twenty-three days, and individuals with a serious mental illness, uh, their, um, average length of stay was approximately twenty-nine days. Uh, so we, we are overperforming our peers, um, in other areas and have made progress, as you can see from earlier months in that graph. The, the difference between an individual with a serious mental illness and a, and those without serious mental illness in terms of length of stay in some months was, was basically double or more. And I do want to give some credit, um, uh, to the Lincoln Regional Center, you can see on the next page, page forty-five, that, uh, from twenty, in twenty twenty-three, the average wait to get into the Lincoln Regional Center was a hundred and fifty-four days. Um, and in twenty twenty-four, uh, that was reduced to sixty-nine days. That, I think, is in large part due to an increase in their bed capacity. Um, now that we've filled those beds, I do kind of anticipate that that number will go up somewhat, probably moderate somewhere in between those, uh, two levels for twenty twenty-five, um, but, uh, we will take the good news on the mental health front wherever we can get it. Okay, turning back to my summary. To enclosure number six, security operations in our honor guard. Um, the crisis negotiation team, or CNT, uh, conduct, they conducted training exercises that, based upon some recent real-life scenarios, uh, with the intent of improving, uh, rapport building, and, uh, with individuals who are experiencing a crisis. Our crisis negotiation team was deployed eleven times in January. Issued as, addressed included, excuse me, working with several, several mentally ill individuals who had been refusing basic hygienic care to get them to take showers, assisting an individual who did not want to be released from custody, negotiating with an individual who is refusing to be transferred to another facility, working with an individual who is refusing to attend court, and working with an individual, um, who was refusing to return medication that they had previously refused to take. Several of these deployments were in conjunction with our CERT team. And our CERT team, Correctional Emergency Response Team, uh, was, um, they, they also conducted training in use of distraction and de-escalation devices. CERT team was, uh, also deployed eleven times in January, uh, many of these were in conjunction with CNT. The separate deployments included three high-risk medical transports. There were fourteen area searches conducted, minor contraband included items modified for tattooing and nuisance items such as extra linens. Significant contraband included cash app information, we did discover a small amount of marijuana, we received a, we received intelligence that a shank, uh, which is a weapon modify, uh, an item being modified into a weapon was present in a housing unit. However, a thorough search of that unit did not yield any weapons. The honor guard was not deployed during December, they did hold a fundraiser, um, and a staff morale building event on Janu-, or, yes, on January thirty-first, and the honor guard also has begun meeting to prepare for Corrections Week facilities, which are just around the corner, the first week of May. Enclosure number seven, staff development, wellness and retention. Uh, there were seventeen individuals interviewed for correctional officer positions, we received a hundred and thirty applications. A class of nineteen, nineteen cadets began academy training on January thirteenth. Interviews have started in order to begin building our April academy class. Members of our staff have implemented their own Alcoholics Anonymous meetings, um, as a supporter, as a supportive activity for those, uh, who suffer addiction. Uh, our peer support team added new members who will be trained in February. Fourteen staff members utilized the wellness and retention, retention office, and two staff members were referred to external, uh, and resources for additional support. And other noteworthy items, uh, progress continues on the construction of our mental health addition to the Department of Corrections. Much of the work to this point has been underground, um, including utility connections, deep foundations consisting of a hundred and forty-eight eighty-foot deep concrete, concrete pilings. Some surface work, uh, for construction of stair and elevator towers has begun. Um, the above-ground construction is scheduled to begin prior to March first, so it'll be exciting to see it actually start to take shape soon. Um, access to the garage for inmate booking and transportation has been seamless, uh, despite having to traverse the construction zone to get to that garage. With that, I'm ready for your questions.
Thank you, Director Myers, we'll go to discussion, starting with Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thanks for this. Just a couple of informational questions. On, um, page two, uh, where you have, uh, revenue, um, to take a, a line item, our two biggest are, uh, jail housing for the city, the annually budgeted at four and a half million, and jail housing for U.S. Marshals annually budgeted at, uh, four point eight million, uh, with a monthly budget of, uh, three hundred and seventy-five thousand on the city, four hundred and seven thousand on the marshals. And then monthly received are two hundred and forty-one thousand on the city and a hundred and thirty-eight on the marshals. So these budgeted items are estimates, is that correct?
Yeah, they're based upon what we've seen in previous years.
Historically, and so, uh, these would be based on the populations from the city or the US marshals that we house?
That's correct.
So according to this, we're down on both of those for this year?
Yeah, we, our overall population is down, um, the, the marshal service is down across the country, and they're, and we are down locally, um, as Sarpy County has also now has a marshal contract with their new jail, so some of their inmates are going there.
Gotcha.
It's also cut into ours.
On page three, um, and this kind of ties into, again, we are, uh, at a hundred and four percent of, or a hundred and two percent of authorized staff, a hundred and four percent of authorized staff for correction officer ones, which is good. But on page two, um, we have a, is it page two? No, page three, uh, we have overtime, which is slightly up, and my impression is, the more staff we have, the less overtime, and that's kind of reflected here, it's been generally down, but there's a little blip in the last, I guess, January twenty twenty-five number, when we're pretty well-staffed, is there some reason for that? It's not really significant.
If you turn to the next page, I think that yields, will yield the explanation, you can see we had an increase in vacation use, an increase in comp leave used, and an increase in sick time used.
Okay. Cold and flu season, basically, yeah.
That, that's basically it.
The information that you gave us on, uh, uh, mental health, um, on page forty-two, and on the average length of stay indicates that they're lower than, uh, the, uh, non-mental health population by about six days, twenty-three days for people with serious mental health.
No, other way around. The, the mental, the seriously mentally ill in December were staying for twenty-nine days, the, the, the individuals.
Yes, and the other is twenty-three.
Correct.
What's the general population average length of stay?
Twenty-five.
It's what?
In December, excuse me, in December, it was twenty-five days.
Twenty-five days, okay. The, um.
January.
Minority, majority kind of remains where we've had it, at sixty-five percent minorities, thirty-five percent Caucasian or white. That changes a few points, it seems, every month, one way or the other.
It stays right around that two-third mark, it's been pretty stubborn.
And the page forty-two information that you give us on, uh, the mental health status is good, do we have a similar one on people, uh, presenting with, um, drug and alcohol problems?
I don't, um.
If we don't, it might be good to have it, it seems to me that that portion of the population would be larger than the mental health portion of the population. I'll come back.
That's time, thank you, we'll go to Commissioner Morgan.
Mike, thank you and your team for what you do, and, uh, the respect you always showed to, you know, the people that are incarcerated. The homeless situation's close to twenty percent, a couple hundred individuals, is it because they've committed some walk away from our restaurant or something, or is it just, are they picked up at Seventy-seventh and Cass, or by the papio, or what is it usually?
So, um, I, there, there are several different reasons, I, one of the more significant ones, and we actually track this on page thirty-one, it's kind of a summary of the, uh, of our population, and we, one of the things that we take note of is, is people who are booked into the jail for trespassing, because that's the, kind of the strongest indicator, um, these are folks that probably didn't leave when asked, um, and so law enforcement wasn't left with a lot of choices. And we had a hundred and fifty-six people arrested that were booked in for trespassing, ninety-two of those were people who were booked in more than once, um, so that, that I think is the biggest driver, uh, when you're looking at our homeless population.
And with, if we turned the clock back, and I'm sorry, I don't recall, but was our homeless situation three years ago running close to the twenty percent? I thought it was a lot less.
Um, it, it's kind of been in that, that range of maybe seventeen to twenty-two percent, I mean, it's been, it's been pretty steady over the course of time.
Okay. All right, thank you again very much.
Absolutely.
We'll go to Commissioner Friend.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So Mike, we've, um, I, seems like, uh, lately I've been, uh, pointing this out, I've, I've been on the board, I don't know why, I've been on the board for about four years, and Commissioner Kavanaugh, my friend, it does a, it, it's ritualistic, and he, and he does a pretty good job, he, he does a good job at, at what he tries to focus on, but I, but I always think it's interesting when we do it in the, in the corrections mode, and here's what I mean. When we talk about enclosure four and we talk about populations, I want everybody to be very clear about what your authority is, I mean, what your job is. And let me give you an example of what I mean by that. Nebraska State Patrol, the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, the Omaha Police Department, other law enforcement entities, uh, within the Douglas County jurisdiction, the Douglas County Attorney's Office, the DC Public, Public Defender's, the Douglas County Public Defender's Office. That funnel is where you're actually, uh, putting your population numbers, or you're getting your population numbers from. Let me give you an example of what I mean finally, and I've said this before, I said this a couple of years ago. Fifty point four percent of the population of Douglas County is female, just a little over fifty percent of Douglas County is female. Sixteen percent of our population at Douglas County lockup is female. That's inordinate, that doesn't make any sense to me. I, and I'm even gonna ask you why that is, because you don't have any control over that. If we want to have the State Patrol, if we want to have the Sheriff's Office, if we want to have Omaha Police, if we want to have the Attorney's Office and the Public Defender come up here and speak to that issue, then I think that we're gonna do some broken field running, I think we're actually gonna be able to come up with some answers culturally, criminal, criminal statistics, the whole bit. All these numbers always concern me, the question is, why are they like that? And do you ever have an answer for us? That's rhetorical. Mike, I appreciate the information you provide, and I'm not frustrated, I, I just want clarity when we go into these meetings about what your responsibility is and what you're actually reporting for, so, Mr. Chair, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you, we'll go to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thanks, and, and thanks for that, Mike, I usually, um, want you to have that context on, on the record, so I appreciate you bringing that up. We have no control who comes to our correction center.
We, we do not.
So, uh, the disparity in any demographic, whether it's gender or race or anything else is beyond our control.
Yes, it is.
Okay, here's another demographic that we have, and what I'm looking for is something that we can do with this. I was interested in the, uh, page forty-two information that you give us on, on inmates presenting with mental health and their average length of stay. On page forty, we have number of individuals placed on drug and alcohol withdrawal protocols, which would be people with bad drug and alcohol problems. And there's a graph there that shows that about a hundred and fifty or a little more than ten percent of our overall population, and, um, I'm just looking for, you know, maybe average length of stay of those folks, um, to break out the people in our population with drug and alcohol problems is a, a big factor, um, both in recidivism, but in mental health, there's a significant overlap between people who present with drug and alcohol problems and people who present with mental health problems.
Absolutely.
There's a significant overlap between people who have drug and alcohol problems and people who are homeless, I mean, that might be almost a hundred percent, but it's way high. I mean, that might be almost 100%, but it's way high. If we could drill down on that a little bit, and I know that we're, you know, in the process of building this wing for people with mental health problems, and see what the average length of stay is with somebody who's there for, you know, a DUI. And that's usually not your first DUI.
Correct.
You know, if you're doing jail time for a DUI, you've had DUIs before. People that are there for, you know, possession of a controlled substance. And, you know, usually you're not there for having an ounce of marijuana, that's an infraction. You're there for more than an ounce of marijuana or a different controlled substance. Those people have drug and alcohol problems, and I'd be interested, what's their average length of stay? And then what programs do we have? I note that we are, and it's good that we are, providing weekly AA meetings for our staff. And I think historically we've provided regular AA meetings for our inmates. I, I don't know if that's in this report, but I know we do.
There are, yeah, in enclosure number two, I couldn't point to the page to you right now because there's a lot of data in enclosure number two.
Yeah, right.
But there are a variety of 12-step meetings that go on. They go on pretty much daily for different populations.
That's great. If we could have that as part of the report, because I think, you know, a larger portion of our population probably presents with drug and alcohol problems, maybe with a mental health problem on top of that, than probably any other single thing we can point to. And if we can start dealing with that on an average length of stay of 35 days, we can make a little bit of a dent in that. Average length of stay at a inpatient drug and alcohol program, even the high-end ones, is 30 days. We have people with mental health issues that have an average length of stay of 29 days. They have a mental health issue when we come out. You're not going to get 29 days and boom, your mental health issue goes away. And we can't get them to the regional center because the waiting list is 69 days. So if you come in with a mental health problem in Douglas County Corrections Center, and it's so bad that you qualify for the regional center, mostly you're going to be discharged before you get a referral to the regional center, unless you get Board of Mental Health or something.
No, they will stay with us until they go to.
I'm sorry?
They will stay in our custody until they go to the regional center.
Okay.
That's time.
And how big of a population is that?
That's time.
Oh, sorry.
Do you want a third two-minute round?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I just was wondering, that regional center population, what, what number of?
We currently, I believe, we have 14 people on the waitlist.
14 out of 1,000, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the director's report?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm glad to see so many people from the fine department we operate here in Douglas County. I congratulate them on their work. However, I want to caution them some, and, excuse me, I did spend a lot of time yesterday on records, your presentation, mental illness and homelessness, big topics coming up, but I'd like to caution most of your workers that because of privacy laws in this state, in this county, a lot of the help that you hope you're going to be able to give your people will not arrive because people don't want to talk. People don't want to listen. Experts such as mental health experts and therapists don't necessarily want to share information, even if the law says for lawful purposes they can. I have a grandson that has experienced this stuff, and they don't want to listen to grandparents, but you talk about families? Don't talk about families if grandparents aren't considered part of the family and therefore allowed to be involved, allowed to give input. The other thing is my grandson just turned 25, so unfortunately he missed the point again, simply because the experts say, well, the brain is totally mature at age 25, and it doesn't matter after you're, after you're 25. So the young adult thing gets cut off. They get young adult court until age 25? Excuse me. What expert came up with that? So you don't necessarily want to listen to all the experts, even if they do tell you things. They might not ask you anything either, but your people might know the inmates better than they do, because it might be the first time they ever met them. Well, now that's, is that going to help you with your mental illness program? And then your homeless program? Oh my God, people are breaking into all these houses along Northwest Rodeo Highway and up the hill towards 45th Street because they don't have a home. They don't have a affordable home. There aren't enough 501Cs around Omaha to provide housing for them. So they're breaking into all these real old nice apartment buildings that could be affordable. But are you people doing anything about that? No. From Cummins Street to Hamilton Street and up to 45th Street to the east? Go take a look, try through it. Look at how many windows are boarded. Even a small, nice little affordable home that's for sale, they broke into that. But is anybody doing anything about the homeless people there? No. I guess your city is waiting for it to be developed. Maybe that's what's going on there. You want to say, maybe I'm touched. Well, I might be, but I'm not necessarily mentally ill. And some therapist might say, oh, well, he doesn't meet the guidelines. He flies his flag upside down, but I'm not going to send my mental illness right along just because of that, and a neighbor reported that he's strange, he's, that's not necessarily mental illness.
20 seconds.
Do your experts get into that with the inmates? Or is it a slam-damn thank-you ma'am interview, and that's it? And they don't qualify because they don't know the information. My grandson missed it again in court because you people don't listen. I have proof on that tape that he is mentally ill. He's missing part of the brain, but you and your judges said, oh, he's, he's perfectly normal? Why? Because he didn't listen.
That's time. Thank you, Larry.
So don't expect success with your programs. And if you can't have it, then don't spend the money.
Commissioner Morgan?
I just want to say one thing, and I think Sheriff Hanson is here. I know that I've had some people around the 77th and Cass that have called about the issue. They're on Cass Street, right by the Papio and the sports place there in the garage and some other things. And I know that he's worked and he can correct me, but I know that in the past year and a half, has worked hard to try to be helpful with the police and do what he can to listen to the citizens and do something about that, so it isn't like the county isn't doing anything. We are and he is, and I thank him for that. So we do follow up when we hear from the citizens about that situation of the businesses in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the director's report for corrections? If not, thank you, Director Myers. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Morgan, second by Rogers to adjourn Board of Corrections. Roll call. Thank you. We'll go into Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Fahy, he's absent, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business, our items 1A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, February 4th, 2025, and B being the approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, February 18th, 2025. Do I have a motion and second?
Second.
Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda, items 2A through F. Do I have a motion and second for discussion? Second by Morgan, or, excuse me, motion by Morgan, second by Rogers. Any comments or questions on the consent agenda? If not, we'll vote.
Teresa, excuse me, Teresa York County Attorney's Office. Dan, did you have an addition to B3? No, no worries.
We're going to have to re, I'm sorry, Commissioners, or, well, Commissioner Garcia, maybe I'll just ask for your affirmative vote after I make this.
That's fine.
I got to pull up the language that Teresa sent me. We got, this is regarding item 2B3.
MUD.
Correct. Okay, so we want to add to this resolution, be it resolved by this board, or be it resolved, this board authorizes the expenditure of $154,000 to Metropolitan Utilities District to relocate 1,040 feet of 6-inch steel gas main, and the chair is authorized to sign the necessary documents. So I believe the last part of, and the chair is authorized to sign the necessary documents may have been excluded from the resolution that was submitted. So we just wanted to add that in and include that for the record.
Add that addition if the board's okay with it.
Yes.
And we'll go back into the vote.
Tell you what, you, I got the, I paused it after five of the Commissioners had voted. You just want to vote yes, and I'll make sure the record reflects that you voted yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to new business, section four, resolution under item A, resolution appointing Michael Goodwilly to the position of Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds to complete the unexpired term of the late Walt Pfeffer, sponsored by all Board of Commissioners. So, motion to approve by Borgeson, second by Morgan. And after we vote, we can maybe go into the ceremony and maybe allow for a few words as well, and we'll go from there. So let's get the vote in.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. If you all want to set up for the swearing-in ceremony, well, we thank the staff from the Assessor Register of Deeds office. Many of you are here today. Appreciate all your hard work and working with everyone through this transition. We know that sometimes leadership transitions can be difficult, but with the great leadership we have internally, we envision a very good, smooth transition. So with that, we shall have the judge join us here.
Mr. Goodwilly, would you raise your right hand for me, sir? Sir, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Nebraska, against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
I do.
Do you also bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
Yes.
And, sir, will you take this obligation freely and without mental reservation for any purpose of evasion?
I will.
And, sir, will you faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office of the Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds, according to the law and to the best of your ability?
I will.
And, sir, do you further swear that you do not advocate, nor are you a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the Government of the United States or this state by force or by violence?
Yes.
And, sir, do you promise that you will not advocate nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the Government of the United States or of this state by force or violence?
I do.
So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much.
Oops, sure, sure, sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Mr. Assessor, Register of Deeds?
Thank you. At one point up here at the podium at one meeting, I think one of you said, well, I've asked you what time it is, and you're telling me how to build a watch, which I thought was a funny line because it was true. So I will try and be brief. First, I would like to thank you, Commissioners. This is a tremendous vote of confidence, and I can't even begin to tell you how honored I am by it. But I'm also aware that this isn't just about me. This is about the management and staff at the assessor's office currently, that you are, you are articulating your confidence in the direction that office is going and in the way it's operating. We have some real quality people that, that I can't thank enough. And of course, this is a continuation of the term of the late Walt Pfeffer. And I think we take that all very seriously. I think we're very happy with the direction that he put us on, and I see this as kind of his legacy, and I don't anticipate any real significant changes in the manner in which we do business. I would also like to thank, take a minute to thank all the other county officials that I've worked with over the years. There's too many to count, and I, I look forward to working with them in this, in this new capacity. We really do have some awesome people in all of the offices, and I can't even begin to tell you how much I've enjoyed working with them. And last but not least, I'd like to thank my family, my wife Cheryl and my daughter Claire. My daughter Lauren is on Zoom from London where she lives now, and my brother Steve from Los Angeles. And so, thank you one and all. I hope I can continue in the, the, continue to do the kind of quality work in that office that, that we've been getting, and thank you once again.
Thank you. And Mr. Goodwilly and Jake, while you're here, maybe we can get a pick for the board?
Sure. Your family's welcome.
And our thanks again to all the staff of the Assessor, Register of Deeds for all your quality work. Really appreciate it. We're going to go ahead and move on to item 4B under new business, which is the presentation on the battery safety issue and requesting board support of proposed LB 309, the Safe Battery Collection and Recycling Act. This is an item that will be presented by Director Holm.
Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director. What I'm going to present to you this morning is- What I'm gonna present to you this morning is a significant issue, and it's becoming more substantial and more impactful seemingly on it as every day goes by. So without further ado, I'm going to let pictures tell the story. Lithium-ion batteries, lithium batteries in particular, are the culprit here. And as you see from these pictures, the top picture is a picture of a trash collection truck where a battery got compromised in there, started on fire. And basically, the truck has to dump its load in the middle of the street someplace. Lower left-hand corner, this is a fire that got started in an apartment. You can see it. It can be pretty significant. And the lower right-hand corner, that's what remains of it, of an e-bike, e-scooter. These are very common types of fires that have been occurring more and more. And here's a short video I want you to look at. This is a dog chewing on a portable rechargeable battery. And I will reassure you that the dogs here were just fine. And no one got hurt, thankfully. But you can see what's happening here is what's called thermal runaway. And the lithium batteries that are contained in these devices, once they get exposed, once they get crushed or punctured, and they get exposed to air and moisture, they will literally explode, and then it just starts a chain reaction. These burn at extremely high temperatures, some 600-plus degrees. And it's, it is becoming more and more of a safety issue.
Here.
Is that where you were? Yeah, okay.
Okay, so closer to home. This is a fire that occurred in the Gretna Sanitation truck, I believe, the first part of November. And basically, just had to dump the load out in the street, and then it provides access for the fire department to put it out. You can generally put these out with water. It takes a lot of water. These things, again, burn very hot, and it just, it takes some effort to get them extinguished. First Star Fiber is the company that processes most of the recyclables that are picked up by FCC here with the City of Omaha contract. They've had a number of fires in their facility. Some of them fairly small, can easily contain. But there are other fires, and not necessarily here, but across the country, where entire facilities are basically just burned to the ground. This is having a significant impact on their ability, these businesses' ability to get insurance. Their insurance rates are, in some cases, doubling every year because of these things. So it's a significant issue. Normally, I don't like to put slides in my presentations that have a lot of, a lot of words in them. But I put this in mainly because this presentation's gonna be archived, and I wanted folks to see this particular information. I know Dan handed out an info sheet. There's a lot of good resources, and we'll make more of those available. But this is why some of this stuff happens. And basically, it's, these batteries just get compromised. And there's, there are all sorts of products. So it's not something that's gonna go away, but it's only gonna, gonna be more problematic. So it's interesting when you look at the batteries. Here's six different kinds of AA batteries, things that we commonly use in a lot of devices. And they all look pretty much the same. They're all, I mean, the pictures are a little bit, they were cut and pasted on here. So they're maybe a little, appear to be a little bit different in size. But they're all AA batteries. And most people can't tell the difference. And most people don't take the time to kind of figure out, okay, is this lithium, this not, whatever. Because the way you dispose of an alkaline battery, which is on the left, as opposed to a lithium battery on the right, significantly different. The alkaline batteries don't have the same kind of a problematic issue with fires. Larger batteries, and these are batteries that are larger in weight, but also larger in power capacity. So things like lawn tools and things like that, and then the e-bikes and other things that relate to that. We're seeing more and more of those things on the market. So how are we supposed to deal with these? Well, one of the things, and this is extended producer responsibility, you may have heard about this. This is a, basically a template for how we can start addressing some of these materials. We wanna get behind, get in front of the safety issue and address that. So this has been shown to be a best practice across the country. And just to kind of go through a little bit of, kind of explanation of what this is, you have companies that design and produce a product. Let's say it's a cellphone. They produce and distribute that. Consumers buy it, they use it. At some point, they need to dispose of that, get a new one, et cetera. And so then, that goes back into a recycling process. The companies recycle it. They get the materials out of that old product that they can reuse again. One of the, a couple of different things about the EPR process is that it really incentivizes the manufacturers to produce a better product, a product that can be more easily recyclable, that produces less waste. They can then get some of those valuable metals like lithium, nickel, those types of things, and reuse those. If you look around the planet, there are, there are places around the, around the Earth that are really experiencing some interesting political dynamics because of these metal, types of metals. And if we can recycle some of these materials and keep them here, that's another benefit. One of the other big benefits of extended producer responsibility is the fact that it will move the cost of collection from government and the public sector to the private sector. So for example, our Under the Sink facility, which right now collects batteries, and we pay Call to Recycle, which is a nationwide nonprofit that deals with battery recycling and reclamation, we pay them to take, take those batteries. Under an EPR scenario, the Under the Sink operation would get reimbursed by, by the stewardship organization. And therefore, that would be a gain for the taxpayers here, that we wouldn't have to pay for that particular service. And I can go into a little bit more detail about that if you have questions. This is something that's been gaining momentum across the country. And I would ask you to focus on the yellow states, the states in yellow. These are all states that this year are anticipating, or already have or will be introducing battery-related legislation. And again, safe, the safety aspect is the driver here. The other things, yes, there's other benefits, but safety is the big issue. Now, until we get to an EPR scenario, what are we doing right now? Call to Recycle, again, is a nationwide nonprofit. They actually have some collection sites here in Nebraska. I don't remember exactly the number of them, but Home Depot, Lowe's, Best Buy, and Staples are all national partners of Call to Recycle. And so Call to Recycle puts collection bins in those retailers' outlets. And so they, they are actually now subsidizing some of that for the retailers. There are a few other locations, I believe Ace Hardware is one of them, where they're doing it just specifically voluntary, voluntarily, and they have to front the whole cost. In a extended producer responsibility scenario, then the battery stewardship organization, which could be Call to Recycle, then would pay for that service. The battery stewardship organization gets funded by the battery manufacturers and producers. So that's kind of the way that, that works. Oops, excuse me. Now, why, why is Douglas County involved in this? So we are part of the metro area planning agency's Regional Integrated Solid Waste Management Plan. And as part of that plan, there are certain elements that, that are focus points. One of them is a sustainable funding scenario. We wanna be able to get to a point where the services we're providing on solid waste management are sustainable. And so the, the extended producer responsibility that's outlined in LB309 fits that because it basically, whatever expenses we have, then are compensated by the stewardship organization. We're collecting resource value from the batteries. Instead of throwing them in a landfill, throwing them away, and losing that economic benefit, resource value, we're capturing that. It helps us to track waste generation, how much of this waste is, is being diverted from the landfill, for example. Improving end markets, that's simply tying back to the resource value. And of course, increasing awareness is probably the most important thing that I'm doing today. We have to understand the safety risks involved because they are getting greater. I did want to pay, kind of, to conclude. The Omaha Recycling Guide, which is kind of a cooperative effort with Keep Omaha Beautiful and Omaha Public Works and the other folks who are, are working with solid waste, they have a particular link to rechargeable batteries to talk about some of the best practices there for consumers. And finally, I just wanted to say, these batteries are all around us. I'm specifically wearing these today. I got these new a couple of weeks ago. And the first thing I did was to get the instructions out and to look at what the battery stuff was, all the instructions about battery use and management. There are so many devices that we use every day. Cell phones, laptops, these things, the earphones she's, she has on, so on, and all the different products we use. A lot of them contain lithium batteries. And there's a lot of folks, and I will put myself in the same boat, that a year or so ago, I was doing some stuff with batteries that was pretty careless. So I've learned a lot, and I would appreciate the, the board's support in, in supporting LB309, because I think it puts us down a road where we can be more sustainable. Yes, we can certainly get the resource value out of those batteries. Most importantly, we're addressing a safety issue. With that, happy to entertain any questions. Also, I know that on, on the Zoom link, Mark Bullish, who is with the Rechargeable Batteries Association, they basically represent the battery producers and manufacturers in the country. And I think he's available if there's some specific questions that you would have on a technical note of batteries. So, thank you.
Sounds good, thank you. We'll go into discussion, starting with Commissioner Morgan.
Kent, and Kim, thank you very much. And what I'd like to suggest, if it's okay, and there's no timing to it, Kim, if possible, working with Ken, maybe you can send that out to us in an email, channels, I think it was Channel 7 News, and maybe the other information that we could pass along to some of our family members and then to citizens that might contact us. And I know in some states, the fire departments, and someday we may hear from them about it, they're not even, if they see an electric car on fire, they pulled off. It burned so hot. And that's really the truth. In certain states, they've told the people, "We're not even fighting that fire because they burned so hot, they can't do it." And you've probably heard that. Don't hesitate to correct me and say, "No, that's not accurate." Because I know I've heard that.
No, I, I think you are accurate. Some of those burn very hot, very quickly. I, I will say that, that the LB309, just to clarify, is not going to address the EV, electric vehicle battery component. I mean, that, that's to come. There are certain states that are, that are enacting some, some EV laws right now that will, will address those. But that's kind of a different animal because it's a larger battery, and there's a lot more firepower to it.
Correct. And I know Arizona's one of the states that has made that a policy decision. So I thank you again for bringing it to us, and really appreciate the information. And if it takes a couple of emails to us, fine, we get enough emails. But that's really an important issue right now because we're not aware. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll go to Commissioner Borgerson.
Thank you. Kent, did you say Under the Sink currently collects batteries?
Yes, they will take, take those batteries.
Under this, would that facility continue to collect those? Or would we be creating a different facility?
Well, both. They, they will continue to collect those batteries. The one thing that will change is that the cost of them collecting and managing them for the stewardship organization, they'll get reimbursed for those costs. So, so that helps, that helps offset, you know, what currently we would have our costs be. There will be an expanded network. If this goes through the battery stewardship organization that's set up, and it might be like Call to Recycle, that nonprofit, they would come in and they would, they would work with folks who wanted to voluntarily be a collection site. I would anticipate that across Nebraska. The existing household hazardous waste facilities, like Under the Sink, one in Lincoln, one in Grand Island, et cetera, they would continue to be a drop-off site. They will get reimbursed for those costs. And my understanding is that also, a voluntary collection site, let's say it's, you know, an Ace Hardware, they would also be reimbursed for the, the cost of those collections. The cost of the program is ultimately borne by the manufacturers. They recognize that they want consistency across the country to, as much as possible, so that they can be efficient with their operation. And again, as you go back to my EPR diagram, there's a real incentive in that program for them to continually improve their products. And this not only gives them some materials back, in terms of the recycled materials, but it also then, hey, how can we, how can we do our research and development to be able to improve the product so that it's still doing the things that the consumer needs it to do, but we can recycle it better? We, we don't create as much waste. We create a safer product, and all of those types of things as well. So I, I know that was a little long-winded, but I, I'm trying to build context and awareness here as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the presentation, or from Mr. Holm?
Motion to approve LB309.
Most to approve, support for LB309, as requested by Director Holm. Is there a second? Second by Rogers. Any final discussion? We'll vote.
Just before we vote, there isn't a resolution with this item, but I mean, this has come up before previously with LBs and Ellen, just simply, Ellen Sacks from my office just simply, basically has a sentence that the board moves to support LB, in this case, 309. So it'll be something like that. But we could send out a draft to Kent ahead of time, make sure it kind of says what he was thinking, but it'll be along those lines, so.
Okay.
Oh, I'm, okay. I guess we do have a, something for B that maybe just didn't get on the agenda, or agenda on the website. So I apologize, there is a resolution. Go ahead and vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners, again, I very much appreciate your support. This is a very important safety issue, not only here in Nebraska, but across the country. On a weather-related note, I know that tomorrow is going to be a little challenging potentially. I was intending to go down to Lincoln to testify in person for this. I'm assuming that perhaps our lobbyist is already going to be in Lincoln. And if you would allow him to testify in person for this, I would appreciate that. I would love to be there in person, but I also don't relish driving in a snowstorm in my younger days, maybe, but not today.
Sounds like a plan.
Motion passes. Commissioner Friend abstains. All other commissioners voting yes.
The Commissioner, well, first, Commissioner Friend, did you have something?
I abstained, and it's certainly, I'm certainly not trying to send a message or it's not something that I've made a determination on. I know we had a chance to read this bill. It's been out there. It was dropped on, I believe, the 19th. I haven't read it yet. It's 19 pages long. I also, so the details are pretty important to me. Second reason that I abstained is if we're the only state that does this, we've got kind of a federal, we've got a commerce issue. And I'm a little bit worried about the manufacturer, a little bit, more than a little bit worried about manufacturers making decisions in Nebraska based on the lack of a fingerprint from the federal government. So let me read the bill. I didn't want to say no. I mean, it all seems, I even told Kent before this, it all seems a heck of a lot of common sense is being applied here. So I'm not making a political statement. I love to read legislative bills. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And then Commissioner Kalam, did you have something?
I was going to follow up on the committee hearing tomorrow, but it sounds like you've got it covered with our lobbyists, so thank you.
Yes.
Real quick, do you know where NACO is on this?
I've talked to them about it. I don't know that they've taken a formal position. I think it's probably just a monitor and neutral position. I can tell you, there's a lot of support for the bill. The League of Nebraska Municipalities, I believe Lash Chafin is going to testify in person for that. The PRBA, the Rechargeable Batteries Association submitted comments on it. The National Waste and Recycling Association, which is the group that basically represents all of the solid waste industry, recycling business, they're in support of it. Call to Recycle, which is the national nonprofit that handles battery recycling, they're a 501(c)(3), they don't take any kind of a lobbying position, but they are supportive of the intent of the bill as well. And then there are a number of others in the solid waste industry, and the Nebraska Recycling Council and so on. And I can get you a full list of those. To Commissioner Friend, to your comments, I will provide a couple of summaries, which will assist you in your review of that. I'll send that around so that all of the commissioners have that. It'll speed up the process of reading it.
Thank you. Very briefly, Commissioner Morgan.
Commissioner Friend, I'm not trying to be nice to you, but I do want to thank you for your reading that, and I know that's important. So I'll look forward to hearing from you after you've looked it all over, too, because I respect that greatly. And thank you.
And Commissioners, please, please reach out to me if you have specific questions because I can get you answers if I don't have them directly.
Sounds good. Thank you, Director Holm. We'll go to Section 5, Recognitions and Proclaimations, starting with 5A, which is the recognition of the following county employee, Joseph Bedeviano, who worked for the Douglas County Sheriff's Office for 15 years. I'm not sure if the employee was here today. I think yes. And if so, let me take a motion of second for the resolution. Motion by Morgan, second by Friend, and if you'd like to say a few words, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and members of the board. We're very proud of Joe and his 15 years of dedicated service to the safety of the City County Civic Center and the courthouse complex. And I think I've said it before at this very podium, our entrance screening officers, our building security officers, they're the unsung heroes of public safety in this footprint, in this government footprint. Specifically, the ESOs, keep in mind that they either have a background in military law enforcement or a background in actual certified law enforcement. That is what meets their minimum criteria for their job. Really appreciate all of them, and especially Joe, for his 15 years of service. We have a plaque that we have completed to give to Joe today, and thank you also for your recognition as well.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for the people, citizens of Douglas County. It's been a pleasure working for you for these past 15 years. Caps off about 40 years in law enforcement for me. So, thank you very much.
Let me go to Commissioner Kalam real quick, and then we'll vote on the resolution.
Joe, I just wanted to say real quick, thanks for having our back, literally.
It's been my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. And don't go too far because we might take a quick picture of you, Joseph. So, let's vote on the resolution.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right. We still got Jake here, so let's take a quick pic. All right. And for the next proclamation, I shall pass it to Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to just read the resolution and recognize February as Black History Month. And it reads, "Whereas in 1776, people envisioned the United States as a new nation dedicated to the proposition stated in the Declaration of Independence that all men are created equal and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas African suffering enslavement were first brought involuntary to the shores of the United States as early as the 17th century, and whose ancestors subsequently faced the injustices of lynch mobs, segregation, and denial of the basis of fundamental rights of citizenship. And whereas in the face of injustices, people of goodwill of all races in the United States have distinguished themselves with a commitment to the noble ideas which the country was founded and fought courageously for the rights and freedom of African Americans and others. And whereas many African Americans lived, toiled, and died in obscurity, never achieving the recognition those individuals deserve and yet paved the way for future generations to succeed. And whereas African Americans such as Maya Angelou, Arthur Ashe Jr., James Baldwin, Clara Brown, Ralph Bunch, Shirley Chisholm, Frederick Douglass, W.E.B. Du Bois, Ralph Ellison, Medgar Evers, Alex Haley, Mahalia Jackson, Stephanie Tubbs Jones, B.B. King, Martin Luther King Jr., Cora de Scott King, Thurgood Marshall, Constance Baker Miley, Rosa Parks, Walter Payton, Jackie Robinson, Aaron Shurley, Sojourner Truth, Harriet Tubman, Booker T. Washington, the Greensboro Four, the Tuskegee Airmen, Prince Rogers Nelson, Reese Taylor, Fred Shuttlesworth, Duke Ellington, Langston Hughes, Muhammad Ali, Ella Fitzgerald, Mamie Till, and Edith Savage Jennings, among, with many others, who worked against racism to achieve success and to make significant contributions to the economic, educational, political, artistic, athletic, literary, scientific, and technological advancement of the United States. And whereas the contributions of African Americans from all walks of life throughout the history of the United States reflects the greatness of the United States. And whereas the February birthdays of Abraham Lincoln, Frederick Douglass, inspired by the creation of Negro History Week through the efforts of author Dr. Cartage Woodson, considered to be the father of Black History Month, eventually to become Black African American History Month, a month specifically set aside to recognize the heritage and achievements of Black people in the United States. And whereas Black History Month of 2025 theme is African Americans and labor focusing on the various and profound ways that work and working of all kinds, free and unfree, skilled and unskilled, vocational and voluntary intersect with the collective experience of Black people. Now, therefore be resolved by this Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County that this Board does hereby proclaim February to be Black History Month and encourages every resident to annually recognize the importance of February as an opportunity to reflect on our complex history while remaining hopeful and confident about the paths ahead and commemorating the tremendous contributions of African Americans to American history. And I move to approve.
Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Discussion and vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers, for that. We'll go into our committees, starting with Finance, with budget report as presented. We also have under Human Resources, the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. We do have a need for executive session today for the purposes of litigation, legal advice, labor negotiation, and security. I'll take a motion of second for that. Motion by Morgan, second by Rogers. Please vote. While we're voting, I want to remind the public that we are off next week for President's Day and will be returning February 25th. I'm going to repeat a second time here, one second, right after the vote's done, unless that affects your vote. It's for litigation, legal advice, labor negotiation, and security.
Motion passes six to zero.
The Board should now go into its executive session for the purposes of litigation, legal advice, labor negotiation, and security. advice, labor negotiation, and security.
Motion to adjourn by Borgerson, second by Rogers at eleven forty-nine a.m. The motion passes four to zero. Commissioners Kavanaugh, Fahy and Borg- Morgan are absent.